Call the meeting to order at six oh two. And we'll start with the pledge of allegiance. Please join me.
To the flag of the United States of America. And in the Republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And for the role Chair Reese.
Here.
Commissioner Sarkia.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, Vice Chair. Commissioner Campbell.
Here.
Commissioner Cup.
Here.
All right. Thank you for that. Do we have any reordering of the agenda this evening?
Uh, not, you know.
Okay. And for the approval of the minutes from February sixth. Did anyone have any revisions or comments on those minutes?
No. I move to accept.
A second.
All right. Commissioner Campbell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cup.
Aye.
Vice Chair Sarkia.
Aye.
And Chair Reese.
Aye. Okay. So that takes us to the portion of our agenda for public comment, and this is for any members of the audience who wish to address the planning commission on matters that aren't on the agenda. This is your time to do so. No action is taken on these items at the meeting. And please state your name and address for the record. And comments are limited to three minutes. So we have two. Uh, requests for items not on the agenda thus far. The first of which is Ms. Torres. The second of which is Ms. Shoemaker Silva. So we'll take the comments in that order, please.
Thank you so much for having me. Appreciate it. These comments are regarding the resolutions number twenty five oh two through twenty five oh five. Um, at the website cesium.buellton.heliobuses.ai, which I have provided to all of you included in the comment card that I provided and an email sent into the city planning email. I built a tool for community members and city council representatives to explore and verify updates. Um, in an interactive view. So if you're able to pull it up, you would see what I'm talking about. Um. Chairperson, you agreed that you were going to be able to do that?
The, the website name, yeah.
I'm sorry if I'm inconvenienced. This is my first time as a public speaker commenter at a city council meeting.
Yeah, I. Um. So I was just gonna mention also that we actually this evening, just to step in real fast, we actually have Stephanie Gutierrez, our city attorney. Um, here available. So perhaps she might be able to weigh in if we are able to pull up a website during public comment.
Hi, good evening, everybody. So normally, public comment is not more of an interactive. And I apologize. I know that this is your first time attending a meeting. So normally, public comment is just a comment. And you can lay out any questions or any kind of information that you would like the commission to consider. And then from there, they would, if necessary, provide maybe some direction to staff. And based off of what I'm hearing, it looks like you might have something that you would like to present to them. So maybe that's something that Andrea could discuss with you after about in.
Yeah, absolutely. That was, that was the closing remarks here. Absolutely. Um, so I'll just, I'll continue on. I'll repeat at the website cesium. C E S I U M dot B U E L L T O N. Dot H E L I O V I E W S dot A I. I built an interactive tool for community members and city council representatives to explore and verify city planning updates. I see you have these beautiful picture renderings, and I'm sure these were expensive printouts. In this interactive experience, you will see that I have built out the exact design from the pea soup R R M design. So as a community, as a community, as, as community members, we can go in and see what the future of Buellton is going to look like. So taking these two D print images and bringing them into a three D interactive world. Where anyone can go into a street view level or a bird's eye view level to see what the future of Buellton is going to look like. We can personalize this interactive map to showcase population density. Traffic patterns current versus what they would predict to be look, uh, to look like in the future, given the occupancy that's listed in each of these buildings. So I'm here today, as Stephanie mentioned, looking for feedback, looking for direction. This is not something that I want to just post on Facebook and, you know, instigate a bunch of comments. I'd rather come to you first and find the best way and best route. And perhaps it is just putting it face front to the community and having them use that information. But given the city's investment in one, the engaged Buellton website. And two, into the Facebook announcements and the community bulletins. I just see an opportunity for us to bring all that information into a single space. Leverage the power of A I to create these personalized experience where everyone has the information that they need. Whether you're a city planner or you're a community member. And if you go to that website, you will see that I've built everything out for us as a community and you as city council representatives to do that. Thank you for your time. Look forward to feedback.
Thank you so much. Does anyone have any questions for the public comment?
Or for, for staff that.
Or for staff.
Or for the speaker.
So typically, it's not an interactive process. So, um, so Stephanie was saying, so any public commenter will give a, a public comment. And then if planning commission has comments for staff or questions or direction to staff, uh, we can certainly take that.
No question.
No, no for me.
Okay. I guess my, my one question would be. That, um. You know, we have data and we have.
Mm hmm.
Information from subject matter experts on any given project. And some of the projects mentioned are projects we haven't even seen yet. But. Um, you know, there was a mention of, we, we typically have renderings, but there's mentioned traffic levels and patterns and so on and so forth. Obviously, a lot goes into traffic studies and modeling of traffic. Um, by traffic engineers. Um, I would just. My general concern is that, you know. If this is shared with the community, I don't want it to. Create confusion if there's some, some, like a disagreement in the data versus what the tool generates.
I was just gonna say, I would be happy if, if Ms. Torres wanted to come sit down and speak with me, um, during my office hours and we can chat about what the, you know, I can take a look at it and see what the service offers and happy to, happy to, um, chat and discuss. What it is that, that the, that this system would.
I appreciate your positivity and optimism. Um, I guess I should have prefaced with my verifications. I have a master's degree in mathematics and I am certified in digital twin technology. So this is leading technology that is, I'm sure fearful for some, but Caltrans actually has a simulation tool that we can connect into this, uh, current simulation. So. Master's degree in mathematics, resident of Buellton, and I too do not want to create confusion in the community. So I'd love to go through the city council. Um, but the community is asking for it and they know that I'm capable of it. And I've been getting feedback at local establishments already on the tool. Um, so, uh. I encourage you all to open it up and check it out and have a fun off actor.
Great, great. Thanks, Steph, and thanks for the comment. Um, that takes us to our second commenter, Ms. Shoemaker Silva.
Hey, good evening, council. I haven't presented here either, but I was here for the mayor swearing in and out. That's great. Um, I don't know if what I'm speaking on is on the agenda. I thought it was tax dollars supporting the San Ynez Valley Children's Museum. Okay, so that's all. I am a resident and mom and volunteer and donor of the museum from the jump. And continue to enjoy, um, as a matter of fact, last, uh, open play day. So the museum's going to be open monthly on the second Saturday. And we have volunteer meetings as well. And then as things get built out, we'll just keep opening it more and more instead of staying shut till it's all done. We're opening in phases. And my daughter's twelve and she's a volunteer and she's really proud to be a tween that has the volunteer status and she looks forward to it. We painted planner boxes, um, recently and she got to paint with the mayor. And make new friends from new school districts. So it brings the whole community together. I was in San Ynez Valley, moms of preschoolers for five years, and we would have loved this opportunity to play outside with our kids. And open ended, no walls, dig in the dirt, make it up, make it happen, kind of the way kids play. And it's been fun for the adults. And, um. Yeah, I, a donor in my family, um. Has supported it as well, not just in time, but in dollars. And I hope that the community sees the need and is there. And I love that it can bring the library, the botanical museum, horseback riding. It's just becoming a destination for, just like we go up to Avila Beach or Avila Barn. I see that happening and they're making parking happen too. So thank you.
Thank you. Is, uh. Great. Uh, I think, are we ready to move to the consent?
Yeah, if that's, that's all the public comments we have, then, um, yeah.
We have nobody on the next.
Yep.
All right. Did you have?
I have a comment. Anyway, I, I read an article on your presentation to the city council and, um. It's exciting what you have planned and, and it seems very well thought out. Thank you for bringing it to our attention as well.
Do I stay or may I go? Should I stay?
All right. Thank you. Um. Now we have the consent calendar and, um, it looks like the, the action is to receive and file the annual report for the status.
Yeah, and I was just gonna jump in here. I know we don't, we don't often have consent calendar items on the planning agenda. But basically, um, the purpose of the consent calendar is, um, to provide the information to the planning commission as part of the packet. And, um, if the planning commission wishes to just, this is a receive and file item. So, um, you can either just. Vote, vote to receive and file it, or if you have any questions on it, you can also pull it from the agenda for further discussion. So, um, I'll just leave it at that and.
Anyone, uh. Want to discuss anything from the report? Have any questions? Need to pull it from the agenda? I had some minor questions, but they're. Not relevant to like the forwarding of the report. I'd just like to ask them for clarification. Um, of staff, and I don't need to do that here.
Absolutely.
Basically, just updating us on. How far along you're coming with the general plan?
Well, yeah, so basically this general plan annual report, it's, it's something that's required to be submitted annually prior to April first. And it's, it covers the entirety of the general plan, but it is heavily housing element focused. And so you, if you review the report, you'll see kind of all of the, the checkboxes we have to check. And it's just something we submit every year to track. How we are implementing our general plan and again, heavily focused on implementation of the housing elements. So.
Am I able to ask a minor question without pulling it from the agenda? If not, it's.
I will look to, uh. Stephanie for that one.
Yeah, normally we would just pull it if you would like to discuss it further. Otherwise, it usually just goes straight into the motion like, um, Andrea mentioned.
I honestly think it's going to be addressed by the later item. Okay, so do we have a motion on the contents of the consent agenda?
Make a motion to file the, uh, twenty twenty four hour report and the status of the general plan.
Second.
Okay. Uh, Commissioner Cup.
Aye.
Commissioner Campbell.
Aye.
Commissioner Sarkia.
Aye.
And Chair Reese.
Aye. Okay.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Uh, no continued public hearings. So that takes us to our new public hearings for the evening. And it looks like first we have the. New gas station, convenience store and restaurant.
And we're ready. Okay. Make sure that's, that's, everybody can hear me. Alrighty. So, um, good evening, planning commissioners. Um. I am presenting tonight the, um. Project application for the Arco, um, gas station project, um, located at six fifty three Avenue Flags. Um. This. Project is a new application for a previously denied project. Um, however, there are significant changes that they've made to the architectural design, um, that, um. Lent, lent itself to, um, furthering this project along for the planning commission's consideration. Um, the layout remains largely the same as it was previously intended. Um, the main difference is the architectural design has been significantly enhanced. Um. And I'm just going to quickly go through the slides, um, that planning commission has seen this previously. And I realize that I think with the exception of Commissioner Sarkia, um, oh, Commissioner Reese too. Okay, so. Two commissioners have, have, um, reviewed the project previously, two have not. So if I'm going through any items that you would like additional detail on, just please stop me and I will go through it. You're welcome to ask me any questions, but, um, okay, so. Sure. There we go. And. This. Is. It's sharing on this one?
Um, it's sharing through our city TV.
Oh, there we go. Okay, perfect. Okay. But so the project site, make sure that my cursor, I'm pointing to, perfect. Okay, the project site, as I mentioned, is located on six fifty three Avenue Flags. It's about three quarters of an acre. It's in the Avenue Flag specific plan area. Uh, with the underlying zoning of general commercial. The current uses on the site are, um, truck rentals and just, um, storage of some, um. U-Haul trucks, auto repair miscellaneous vehicles. The adjacent uses, um, are commercial, um, to the south here. It's another, actually a gas station on the south here. Um, to the west, um, it's the Central Avenue and to the west are residential uses here. With the self-storage to the north as well, and the roadway surrounded here. This is the, um, southbound off ramp from the, uh, one oh one freeway. And that leads on to Avenue Flags. And the median is right here, across, further across the street is the, um, the hotel. All right. So the, um, permits that are being applied for are final development plan and a conditional use permit. Being processed concurrently for a new Arco gas station with the canopy area. Uh, there's going to be six fuel dispensers, um, with two pumps each, total twelve gas pumps. Um, along with a related A M P M convenience market and a quick serve restaurant. The existing structures on the site, as well as the pavement, would be, um, demolished. And this includes a former gas station building and canopy that was on the site, um, used many years ago. Uh, the parking, um, is all provided for as required by the city. Uh, twenty six spaces are required and twenty seven are provided. One loading space is required and provided. And the access points are two primary access along driveways along Avenue Flags. These would, would be the main points of access to the site. These would would be the main points of access to the site. Um there's one gate controlled access driveway on Central Avenue for fuel trucks only. And onsite stormwater retention is being proposed. I mentioned already the um general commercial land use and zoning for the property, Avenue Flag um specific plan requirements. Just to give a little background um to some of the commissioners. Um this project is located in District One, which is the the gateway district to the city. Um it's a travelers oriented district that encourages visitor serving and vehicle support uses. In the specific plan, this opportunity site, as it was noted, um was described as being um suitable for proposed traveler oriented services such as a gas station. Um art deco um design style, the maximum building height is thirty five feet. So they're proposing under that amount. So it doesn't, it's approximately twenty four, twenty five feet um height. Um the specific plan encourages zero lot lines. Uh with um, well, as I said, it encourages zero lot sign, lot lines with a maximum of twenty five foot setbacks. But it also recognized the fact that there's many um irregular lots on the, in the avenue. And that variations from the setback requirements and the zero lot line requirements could be considered to accommodate unique circumstances of a site such as the irregular shape. And specialty uses that maybe provide, that maybe propose that can't really comply with some of the setback requirements. And the gas station is certainly a specialty use and it's some, something that was there before. And so um it's um considered to be an appropriate use for that site and layout, I should say. So this is the proposed site plan. Um again, it's um basically the same layout as was previously presented to the planning commission. The layout and the parking and the circulation are all similar. What I would like to point out on this, um particularly because we've had some discussions on how the driveway on Central Avenue would be used. Um and it's only uh used, going to be used for fuel trucks entering the site. Um the applicant did provide, if I can show this, a a turning movement template to show how the fuel truck would be able to get into this driveway since there has been some concern voiced over whether or not this is, we'd be able to use this driveway access appropriately. Central Avenue also provides access to the fuel entrance to the um gas station. Fuel truck entrance to the gas station that's um directly south of this site too. So I just wanted to point out that that turning template is there in case there was any questions about how the um fuel truck movements would work. The the main circulation would be off of Avenue Flags for the patrons and for the employees and other deliveries. Um they would come in here and go out here or the other way around, but probably that way. Anyway. Alright. So this slide just pretty much reflects what I um explained about the primary access being on Avenue Flags. And what I would note is that there is one existing driveway on Avenue Flags that would be closed and it's going to be placed by two new driveways. Just went over Central Avenue and what it's being used for. So there is an existing driveway on Central Avenue that's going to be closed. And an additional driveway that's going to be closed, but it will be relocated actually fifty feet to the um the south to allow for this movement that um is on the site plan. Oops, did I say? Okay. There we go. So this is the floor plan uh shown here. Uh there's a little bit more detail that has been provided in this version of the floor plan from what was previously um submitted. Um it has a lot more detail. The layout has changed just slightly and it has addressed some of the building uh division comments that they had made previously on the plans by allowing um by requiring additional exits to the um building. Though it reflects more detail than may have been included in the previous iteration of the plans. So this is the um, the revised project building elevations, which are a considerable enhancement over what was previously being considered by the planning commission. And they've included architectural um ornamentation details consistent with the um art deco requirements and and it's just much more reflective in colors also of art deco. Uh previously, the um sign, uh the AMPM sign had a faux wood background, which is was an issue and that has been replaced. That's no longer an operative sign. Similarly, the uh gas station area has additional art deco embellishments added to it along the canopies and the fuel fuel pumps and just little, little details that tie it into the the building design and the art deco um style element. The colors have been updated also. Um previously, uh the colors reflected more earth tones. And that was one of the comments that our um design review architect had that um art deco typically has much um more black and white differentiation colors, not an earth stone palette. So they have made changes to the color palette to make um the art deco elements pop. And the renderings, which um we felt would be really helpful in this project to show what it would look like. And the art deco aspect really shows in here. And it also shows how the tower elements come together on the corners and how they tie together. This was an item that um was noted by the architectural review um process that the the plans didn't accurately depict how the um some of the elements joined together. How the roof elements joined and because there had been so many changes to the project. So they produced um some very nice rendering um that really do show the project very nicely. So um we have the color boards available here. Um and there's some stylized interpretation, it doesn't reflect every single detail. But I think it really accurately and and very nicely depicts where the corners come together. Um where the towers are, where the entrances are and how it is perceived from the street view. And how it shows the surrounding neighborhoods. So appreciate you doing the um the renderings. And planning commission would like to take a closer look at them. They're they're available. Okay. Um so this is a repeat of some of the uh elevations here, but it also goes into more detail on the sign aspect. Um so there's two monument signs being proposed. Um and they are required to show the gas prices and depict the um the gas station um brand and everything. So those are some uh requirements that have to be displayed. One of the things that was discussed as part of this project, and I know it was a um comment by the planning commission, is to have a very nice gateway welcome monument sign um reflected on the corner. And the applicant has agreed to do that and they've um provided information on this all along. Um let me just back up a little bit. So this, this monument sign that we're talking about is right here on the corner. It was very prominently visible as cars uh come off of the southbound uh exit from the freeway. And it's really the northern entrance from the city. So in reviewing this, um I'm getting ahead of myself here. Let me go to the next sign. So the plans provide a summary of the signage and this being proposed. And it is um complies with the requirements of our, of our code and the um specific plan. They're allowed uh four hundred twelve square feet of signage. And the proposed square footage that they're um showing is three hundred thirty approximately. So they're well within what's allowed for signage on that property. But in reviewing all the signs and the requirements, um it was noted that there really wasn't enough detail on some of the signage. And especially the monument signage, because it's such a a prominent uh location and so visible that staff felt that we really need to have more information on that. Come back to the planning commission. And this would be as a separate item after the project moves forward in the process. Um also, um that additional detail would be part of a master sign program, which is required by the zoning code and very specifically spells out what needs to be provided. And this is applicable when there are um two or more tenants on any property. So they provided a sign summary and they provided some details for the signage. Indicated that a separate sign permit would be submitted for um the signs, which is fine. That's done. You know, that that's a typical process, but um what wasn't addressed is having the sign, master sign program. And additional detail in the monument sign and the gateway sign, which um is staff's recommendation that it be conditioned to come back to the planning commission. So I think I just explained this. Um master sign program is um being requires a condition of approval. And related conditions include the monument signs shall have decorative elements to match the building design and attractive font for the welcome text that's consistent with the specific plan. And I just wanted to mention also, and it's it's addressed in the um staff report and the conditions that all of the signage facing the west toward the adjacent residential uses, um including the canopy stripe, shall be non-illuminated. Okay. So as far as the exterior lighting, uh the concept is, the as proposed is generally acceptable. Um but again, there was limited design details provided and the information is um shown in various locations throughout the project plans. And one of the things that um staff felt would be helpful is to have a consolidated landing, lighting plan provided that shows all the lighting, um including sign lighting, gas pump lighting, canopy lighting on one sheet, just so, and and that it be reflected consistently throughout the project plans. As part of this exterior lighting plan, um the um it's required or it's requested that the intensity should be, should be minimized and directed downwards. So the lighting intensity shall be directed downward to avoid overlighting the area. Because gas stations sometimes have tendency to overlight some of the areas and a lot of light trespass. One of the things that we're requesting is for um additional alternatives to consider for the security lighting luminaire as it didn't appear to be con, it it was a little bit out of place with the the pole sign, the pole fixture that's being proposed. Uh so those are all in the conditions of approval. Um and again, then protecting the lighting from the adjacent residential um development, dark sky friendly, consistent with art deco. So those are all reflected in the conditions of approval. The photometric analysis that was included in the project plans was prepared for the previous project. And it does show a little bit of light spillover at the property. So what we're asking in the conditions of approval is that the photometric analysis be updated and to reflect the currently proposed plans. And that the spillover shall comply with um what's required in the municipal code, which is no more than um half a foot candle at the property line on the side that's adjacent to the residential uses and no more than two foot candles adjacent to non-residential uses. The landscape plan is um largely unchanged from what was previously approved. And the landscape plan looks nice and it's reflected nicely on the um uh renderings as well. There are updates to the landscape plan were minimal. Just included some additional notations and that we requested. Um but one of the conditions of approval is that they provide a landscape plan that shows the calculations of the hardscape area and the landscape area clearly and notes, you know, what the specific um types of treatments will be. Conceptually, it's it's adequate, um but we're just asking for a little bit more detail and just consistency with the other plans. And this is reflected in the conditions. The grading and drainage plan also is largely unchanged from previously. Um the only comment that we had, and this is from um Public Works, which um is on a subsequent sheet, but they are showing uh bio swales on the property as a means of treatment for um stormwater control. And uh we've noted that the project needs to meet um tier four requirements. And we require an updated um stormwater plan uh to be prepared. The one that they submitted was um several years old and um it was for the previous project. So if there is any inconsistencies or requirements that can't be met solely by a bio swale and that additional BMPs are required, there may be some changes to the grading plan. And depending on the level of changes, it, you know, it may or may not rise to the level of requiring additional review. That is also noted in the conditions. So this is a breakdown of the parking analysis. I'm I'm happy to answer questions about this. But um as with the previously denied project, this project, the parking does not change. They meet the parking requirement um when additional space provided, so um there were no issues with the parking at this point. Uh policy consistency. The project is generally consistent with um policy requirements. The only areas, and and this has been updated from the previous um we denied project because previously the art deco is the main issue. Um and this is noted to be generally consistent. The conditions of approval address any of the, of the inconsistencies that were noted with the main issue being the lack of um the plans matching one another. So once that gets all sorted out and they meet those conditions, that it'll be um consistent with the um art deco. And this next item, the allowable heights. There was inconsistencies on the height measurement, so as long as those get addressed adequately, they will meet the the um policy requirements. And those were the only items that deviate here just slightly. Okay, I think we've covered some of this. Um again, the, this is a significant improvement over the denied project. The art deco issue is the main item being concerned. The lack of internal consistency between the plans is being addressed with the conditions of approval. And staff feels that the conditions as set forth in the resolution are reasonable and appropriate to address these inconsistencies. Okay, so we've covered this all already, the public works comments. Um and again, I note this because there were some inquiries about the access along Central Avenue and um just want to make sure that it's clear that the driveway access along Central Avenue would be lot controlled gate as an entrance only for the fuel trucks. And to make sure that this adequately is reflected in the conditions there, just as a minor refinement that staff is recommending to condition forty five, and I'll go over that in the recommendation. Yeah, I just mentioned about the stormwater control plan, tier four requirements. And, you know, if they can meet it with the bioswale as shown on the plans, that's great. Otherwise, though, some refinements may be needed. The planning commission had conducted a preliminary review of the project in July of twenty twenty three. And I've summarized the comments that the planning commission had at that time. They requested that the applicant revise the color color scheme to better match the art deco design style, which they've addressed. Planning commission also noted that the they would like the art deco. I'm sorry, that they would like the monument sign to include more art deco elements. And so some of this has been partially addressed. But we are conditioning the signage to come back for further review, just to make sure the planning commission's desires. And really, the the concern, not the concern, but the 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 main focus here is that this will be a an entryway sign to the city of Beulton and that that really reflects the intent of the planning commission and represent a nice entrance to the community. So just quickly, the other items which have been addressed that I mentioned. The the faux wood material for the signage previously was a concern that has been addressed and has been eliminated. And adjust light lighting issues to ensure consistency with dark sky friendly requirements. So overall, the lighting concept is adequate. We're just asking for the additional detail to make sure that there is compliance. And this that's reflected in the conditions. And let's see. Planning commission asked about the front elevation to provide more symmetry similar to the rear elevation, and that's been generally addressed as well. And to provide a color and materials board in the next submittal. So the color and materials board has been digitally submitted in the project plans. And it's also noted and and you can see the colors. It's noted on the plans adequately. So if there's any questions on that, I'm, you know, happy to go through that in more detail. So as far as the environmental review is concerned, the project meets the criteria for infill development as a class thirty two infill exemption for the following reasons. The site is less than five acres and is surrounded by urban uses. It's consistent with the applicable specific plan, general plan and the zoning code. And it would not result in significant traffic, noise, air quality or water quality impacts. And this has been documented in the Avenue of Flags specific plan M and D dated October twelfth, twenty seventeen. And the project is consistent with what was intended for that site as was studied as part of the M and D in twenty seventeen. So with that, the staff's recommendation that the planning commission consider adoption of resolution number twenty five oh two as well as the revision to condition number forty five, which it consists of an additional phrase added to the condition. And that phrase is here in italics. So the resolution number twenty five oh two reads the resolution of the planning commission to approve a final development plan twenty three F D P O two and the conditional use permit twenty three C U P oh one for a new gas station, convenience store and restaurant located six fifty three, six fifty three Avenue Flags. And the condition forty five pertaining to driveways, that condition shall have the added sentence added to it, which reads as the driveway on Central Avenue is required to be gated and closed with lock controlled access to be used only as an entrance for fuel delivery trucks. No trash trucks or other vehicles shall be permitted to use this driveway. There shall be no egress onto Central Avenue. And that concludes my rec my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have. And also, the applicant and the property owner are here this evening as well. So I know that they probably would like to get up and introduce themselves and talk about the project a little bit as well.
Do we have any questions for staff before hearing from the applicant today?
You're listening to staff.
Get questions for staff, yeah.
So then all the conditions that we were, they were talking about, the elevation discrepancies, they'll be addressed at a later time if needed, or is it part of the recommendations?
It's being conditioned for them to bring the revised plans back to the planning department. And to basically fix the inconsistencies and discrepancies. And those revised sheets will be incorporated into the approved plan set. And that's being, as as stated in the conditions of approval, they're required to do that prior to even applying for a zoning clearance. So in essence, they will need to provide us with the revised sheets, plan sheets to slip into a set like we have provided to the planning commission before they start working on their construction drawings. So they would not be submitting them with construction drawings. They'd have to come in ahead of time. The master sign program is conditioned to come back to the planning commission. Yeah.
Would the bioswells that are currently proposed, would they be located in the green spaces that are around the building and?
And perhaps the applicant would be better able to speak to that. I can pull up the landscape plan and we can. Oops, I'm not sure why this isn't going where I need it to be. Point out the location of the the bioswells. But it was primarily surrounding the property, the buildings rather, and some of these areas where the drainage is being provided.
Okay, I I have a a few. So the lighting and design coming back to, I want to confirm my understanding, coming back to the director. But the signage comes back to the PC because it's a permit that is elevated to PC. And then the one question I had, it's just about feasibility mostly because I'm not sure how we conduct the design review process. But on the condition related to the architectural design, do we have the ability to revise that condition to also include design review from the consultant in addition to the director's review?
I don't see why we could not. I mean, I will just note, Irma can add to this. A lot of the conditions of approval that were incorporated into the project for this did come directly from an architectural consultant. But, you know, certainly we could, you know, require that it be reviewed again.
Yes, and I'm trying to find condition the wording of it because we we did talk about this.
It references the letter, I think.
Yes, it it definitely can be added into that. Yes.
Where I'm at is if it if it is mass, like the rendering, I'm I'm happy with it. I think it's, that's really well articulated and and maybe the applicant, when we, I think the applicant could probably address that. And then my, I have two other quick questions. So I did not, I saw those conditions related to the various aspects of design that are going to require some sort of review at a later stage. The stormwater control plan, where I know it needs a tier four instead of a tier three. What's the timing of that? Is that a zoning clearance or building permit?
That would be prior to zoning.
Is that, I I is that condition fifty one? I wasn't, let me make sure I spoke accurately on that one. We can also come back to it. It was just a quick question. And then if the commission's open to this, I I think generally in the welcome sign, I'm glad we're going to see it again. I like the font change, but and I don't think it's really necessarily fair to ask the applicant to design something like innovative for the city, but maybe they can use a symbol that we've already developed for the medians or something like that. Because we have some really great design already that might, then it's a tie in.
If I may, just I found the the condition on the water quality control board requirements is condition twenty one. They're actually required to update the stormwater control plan definitely prior to applying for zoning clearance and or grading or building permit. So even before they come in to apply for the grading permit, it needs to be addressed beforehand.
Okay. Those are my questions now.
I have some thoughts and some notes on the project. The, I'm glad you guys finally came up with a very nice art deco plan. The previous plan was pretty, pretty generic for ARCO dealerships throughout the US, but this, this is a unique and it's a nice way to come into Beulton.
But let's hear from the applicant and then we'll go into comments.
Your idea.
I think you guys know me very well by now. We've been here many times, Alex Cuevas with AGC Design Concept. We are the architectural engineering firm. But anyway, to address your last question that is fresh in my head. It's been a, I can't tell you how difficult it's been for us because we've been the middle person. We have corporate trying to get their image. We have the city trying to get, you know, what they want and what we present to the city and they send it back to us because it doesn't meet. And we ask, can you just tell us what to do? We're not too proud to say, just give us what to do, like you said, tell us what you need on the signage on the corner and we'll make it happen. Because if we submit something and we're going to go back and forth, back and forth, it doesn't work for anybody. So we're appreciated if you say, put this logo, use this kind of lettering and 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 we go from there. We have zero problem. All we want to do is start the construction documents. And now going back to the construction documents, typically, the way is done. We submit the package to the building department with our complete set of planning. That includes the swells, this includes how we're going to do the grading, architecturally, structural and all that. And that is routed to the planning department and they look at it. Because we don't want to wait for another approval and then submit our plans because we're going to go back and forth again. So typically, that's how it's done. It's not, and that's something that I'm proposing to you. So the modifications to the building, I'm, correct me if I'm wrong, Irma, there is nothing that we need to modify to the building. You guys agree already on the architectural, the design is beautiful. We gave you everything that you wanted. And it's there. This, it shows on the drawings, it shows on the architecture of the rendering. Far as the lighting, yeah, of course, we went back and forth with the landscaping. But when we submit a plan, we can submit another lighting plan, but not a separate thing that we need to get the sign off in order for us to do our construction documents. I mean, if we could, but again, this is how I typically do it with every city. We submit the complete package, they route it internally and 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 we go from there. The architect, the architectural committee or consultant that you have already have seen this and they already sign off. Because I have proof of that on your comments, the architectural review, I mean, they did the review and we actually did what they wanted. And you send us a letter saying you comply with everything. It looks beautiful. The renderies are beautiful. So I'm kind of a little bit confused on that we have to do this. We have now the swells, how are we going to comply with the new tier, whatever that is. I'm not an engineer, so I'm not, I know what, how it works, but I don't know how to design it. But I know my engineer is going to design it, either capturing the water on the landscaping or he's going to have to put some kind of retention basin under. So it's going to happen because they have to do it as a law. So please entertain what I'm saying.
I would just like to clarify our process in the city. So the, the city does all of the intake of construction plans.
Right.
There's no routing from the building department. We contract with Santa Barbara County Building Department for our building permit and plan check process.
Okay.
Before any plans can get submitted to the building department, they have to get a zoning clearance from the planning department. And so the, the conditions that are are set forth requires that you prepare. I mean, you know, certainly you can put them in your construction plans, but you need to address the conditions before you apply for the zoning clearance. Because it cannot be submitted to the to the building department previously, before that happens.
Okay, then can we clarify what are those conditions? Because the one, the part that I'm confused is about the architecture of the building with this kind of sending it again to the outside consultant.
And I just would also like to clarify, I did not send any letter about the architectural design review committee. The architect provided a letter and the, the conditions reflect exactly what the architect said. The plans are generally adequate. They address the art deco, but there's inconsistencies and these need to be fixed in with, in the plans. A little bit different elevations are shown on different plans. It needs to be consistent because once a construction document is prepared, it just needs to be consistent. Discrepancy that needs to be fixed.
No, I I'll look at it, but I thought we already crossed the bridge, you and I. We already looked at the elevations and we, we kind of fixed everything. But again, you guys just tell me what to do, so that way we can move forward.
And it's all set forth in the conditions. We're, staff is recommending approval. And the conditions and conditions for approval are typical for projects.
Oh, no, I know, I know that. I mean, you can tell.
Clarify, our process is a little different than some other cities where you go and submit building department and they route it to the planning to get clearance. You come through the plan.
Okay, and and with that approval also for the zoning is the, what is it called? The basin and then all this stuff for the the water quality and so on. That's part of it too.
That's probably, you would need to work with our public works department to go through for that.
Okay, but we go through you. We send them to you.
We are, the city has, the public works department issues the grading plans.
Right.
I'm sorry, the grading permits. The building department, Santa Barbara County, issues the building permit.
Okay.
And if you have any additional questions on the process, we're happy to go through that.
In the signage, the, I I agree with you, that that's the face of the city. I mean, that if it was up to me, I will do it a lot taller and very elaborate. But we're stuck with this height. So you tell me what to do and we'll do it. Besides that, do you have any more questions?
Any questions for the applicant, please?
I do. In terms of, I saw on the floor plans, the the restaurant space.
Yes.
Currently blank space, no kitchen or anything like that. So is the goal here that the building or the owner of the building will then rent that out to a third party?
It could be, it's going to be two ways. Either they're going to be their own, they're going to run the store. So they're going to be the owner of the convenience, I mean, I'm sorry, the restaurant, or they're going to lease it to somebody else.
And then that, if they lease it out, that person will be responsible for the build out of whatever.
The tenant improvements, yes. And I think some time ago we had already a tenant, but they chose another place. Now we're going to start looking for another one.
Good. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. Should we move into comments then? Are we ready? Or do we have any public comment on this item?
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Speaker's.
Hi there.
Yep, yeah, yeah, we, we have three minutes.
And if you could actually fill out a separate speaker slip.
Sure, we'll do, yeah, absolutely.
The trees, are they going to be planted as mature as they are pictured in the picture, or will they be young trees? What is the height of the trees that you are eh, planting in this landscaping plan?
I think the conditions are based on gallons, not the, the kind of so they're typically like five gallons, ten gallons.
Understood, 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 thank you.
Okay. Great, um. Would anyone like to start with comment?
Sure. Yeah, um, I just really, I counted very quickly, um, counting that we have seven existing gas stations within a one mile radius of this new proposed gas station and one next door. Um, I don't love that, but that said, I do really like the design. I use that exit almost every day from one oh one and think it's going to be a welcome approach and a much improved um, welcome to the, the city from that, that direction, uh, and overall I'm very happy with, you know, I live in the neighborhood as well and think it's a, an added, um, definitely a, a bonus.
Yeah, thank you, this is a lovely design, I mean, the issue was the art deco architecture and I think you nailed it. Well, this is what the community wants, this is actually the specific plan requires, so this is good. I just, I think earlier about the elevation discrepancies, one thing that stuck out to me was that it had to do with the parapet uh, on the roof, there's, you know, from the, the wall section and the kind of profile section had different elevations and, and uh, I'm sorry, we'll, we'll fix that, but it would probably affect the the art deco ornamentation, I have it, if, if the elevations weren't offset, that was one like a survey and this is all maybe that it's not, it's flat, it would have a different style, but if, if you stuck to the renderings and what you have here, this is really great and uh, you know, I think this is what we, we, the city wants, thank you.
Thank you. All right, um, in my list. You know, I like the overall design, it, it really meets what, what we wanna see, especially coming into Beulton. Uh, this, this looks great, uh, a few minor things, um, the um, the AMPN, PM sign over the doorway, that could be a quarter of the size that you've got, so it doesn't take away from the overall design. Uh, the color schemes look very nice. Um, the street signs are adequate. Uh, the selection of trees and the landscape looks very nice, except for the tree on the uh, the north east side, right behind the, the Arco sign there on the corner. I wouldn't put that tree there, cause it takes away again from the building's architecture. Um. The lighting is, uh, the lighting is very nice, um, if you go with uh, uh, smaller elements. Uh, uh, again, so you, you can see more of the architecture and less of the uh, uh, of the lights themselves, that would be great. And uh, um, and I do like the uh, the staff's recommendations, you should keep that in mind. And uh, that's all I have, I'm thrilled with what you have now compared to what we saw in uh, twenty twenty-three.
I agree that the sign is improved even since the last time we saw it, I'm very pleased with how it comes out and the rendering is beautiful. So I'm glad it includes a restaurant and I'm fine with the parking interpretation. It's like, it was potentially consistent, but I think it's the right interpretation, um. As far as how the, the conditions are written, I agree with staff's recommendation, I mean, to me, the lighting plan and the photometrics are gonna be really important because you have the residences pretty close by to the northwest. Um, I'm fine with it not coming to the planning commission, but I do think we should verify before you do construction level documents because it would change, yeah. Um, and then the other thing that I, I'm looking for it to staff verifying is the, the wall details. Um, I know it says it's four feet tall, just wanna make sure it's blocking the car lights into that neighborhood. Um, and then generally, if um, it's more of a a recommendation or just a thought to share than something that I think should be included in the conditions, but if we can share any of the graphics we have from the new median design or the, or the parking lot one with those like, is design elements that the city developed, I think if the, the one, that could be incorporated into the signage, it would save the applicant time. We know it is consistent with the messaging that the city wants and so, that would be my thought. Um, do we have any other questions for staff, are we ready to make a motion? Questions for the applicant? Okay.
I'd like to make a motion to approve. I second the motion.
Okay, Commissioner Campbell.
Aye.
Commissioner Camp.
Aye.
Vice Chair Sarkia.
Aye.
And Chair Reese.
Aye.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey. Um, I have a quick question for staff for the, the remaining public hearings, all those are one staff report, are they all being presented in tandem?
They are.
Yes. Great.
Everyone I are gonna
Thank you. Could I take the, the news or you didn't need it for us or anything?
We have the electronic copy, so, yes.
Yeah, yeah. It would be great to have at least, at least one.
Yeah, we, we will choose which one you want.
You like to show off the, yeah. Like a trophy.
No, that's fine. We're your friend, boy. Something, okay, thank you, all right, thank you.
Thank you. Yeah.
Okay. Okay.
Good job.
Yes.
Thank you.
Trying to
Now we're, now we're
Okay, then you may, Chair Reese and the commission members. Um, I'm gonna go, be going through um, quite a large packet, I know it was a lot to go through, so um, I'll be just going over all the, the important details so that everything is, is captured and um, we can make recommendations from there. So these are general plan housing element, zoning ordinance and avenue flag specific plan amendments. So just to note that all of these uh, uh, amendments that are before you are related to housing in some way and they all relate to one another and, and lead to amendments of, of each other, uh, so that is why they are all being presented tonight together. So three factors that led to these amendments, the first was um, or the most current, I should say, was an emergency amendments that was passed in two thousand and twenty-four that was related to emergency shelters. Um, the second was an update to the housing element of the general plan and that was uh, adopted by city council and certified by HCD, which is the state housing and community development department, and that was in two thousand and twenty-three. And then um, in two thousand and twenty-two, there was a planning director interpretation of a policy for the avenue flag specific plan. So I'll be going into each one of these in a little bit more detail later, but um, those were the three main factors that led to the amendments that you see tonight. So just a bar summary here of each resolution, um, resolution twenty-five dash oh three, the first resolution is the amendment to the housing element of the general plan. And these are really just minor text revisions for consistency with that previously approved urgency ordinance regarding emergencies shelters. Uh, the second resolution, which is the largest, is the amendment to the zoning ordinance, uh, or Title eighteen of our municipal code. Resolution twenty-five dash oh four. So these revisions were made to the zoning ordinance in order to implement our adopted housing element programs which called for these changes in the zoning ordinance that were made in order to be compliant with state legislation. And it also, in addition to the housing element programs, makes permanent that urgent, uh, urgency ordinance on emergency shelters. So that would just uh, codify that urgency ordinance, the same language, it would just be made um, permanent in our municipal code. Uh, the third is the amendment to the avenue flag specific plan, resolution twenty-five dash oh five. And these amendments to the specific plan are due to moving a specific plan to be consistent with the housing element and the zoning ordinance. So that's why it comes last, um, also, one more thing that we, um, it was related to housing. Was um, that making permanent that policy from the planning director interpretation. So we've had that um, interpretation and it's related to ground floor residential uses in the specific plan area. Um, and then it just makes that policy interpretation, which we've approved projects upon, uh, permanent in the specific then. Okay, so just more detail, um, specifically on the housing element amendment. Again, the urgency ordinance was adopted in two thousand and twenty-four. This changed the permit type and zones where emergency shelters were allowed. So previously, um, emergency shelters were allowed by right in the um, commercial, uh, general commercial zone. And by state law, we have to allow uh, uh, emergency shelters in at least one zone by right, which is um, ministerial objective, that is what by right means. Um, and so it changed, this urgency ordinance changed that zone to the industrial zone, which was currently a conditional use permit, so now emergency shelters are allowed by right in the industrial zone and it was removed, it was a, a allowable use in the general commercial and service commercial zones. Um, so the housing element amendment really just revises the background text for the, in the housing element for consistency with that urgency ordinance. And it also um, revises the required justification that we need to give to the state, um, to say how we're complying with state law in regards to emergency shelters. So that's um, the housing element amendment summarized. And I, I won't touch on it again until uh, the recommendation. Uh, the zoning ordinance amendment, I'll spend more time here on, uh, it's the bulk of, of your packet. So by amending um, various sections of Title eighteen of the municipal code, which is the zoning ordinance. We, number one, would make permanent that emergency shelter urgency ordinance. And number two, implement um, adopted housing element programs. So this slide is really just to show um, the chart that is your staff report and is in the housing element. Not to read it or go over it, but just to, to say, these are the programs, the nine programs in the housing element that call for the zoning ordinance amendments. And so instead of by program, I'll be going into it by topic area because I find that might be easier to digest here. Um, okay, so the, uh, two that I've grouped together here are um, in regards to supportive housing and transitional housing, those are in element program, or housing element program three A. And you see the, the certain assembly bills and senate bills that call for the um, zoning ordinance amendments that we have presented tonight. So um, supportive housing is permanent housing, which is linked to onsite or offsite services. Um, so that could be anything from uh, job placement, childcare, um, eh, things to help residents uh, stay in housing and um, encourage them to um, be more successful, really, uh, so private living, dental care departments are those um, examples of this, they offer supportive services onsite. And then transitional housing is uh, temporary rental housing, which provides at least six months of assistance to residents and that really is meant to provide that support, um, but then move them onto permanent housing. So both of these uses are uh, required to be allowed by right in zones where multifamily and mixed uses are permitted, that's the state uh, requires that. So we've proposed these uses is allowed via zoning clearance, which is our by right permit uh, in the multifamily and planned residential development zones. And then supportive housing is allowed, uh, proposed to be allowed by right only as part of a mixed use project in our commercial zones and that has a maximum of fifty dwelling units. Turn, whereas transitional housing um, is proposed to be allowed by right, just as a standalone in commercial zones. Uh, so I'll, I'll just note here that the current code does allow special needs housing via a conditional use permit in all commercial and industrial zones, so these two uses in the past um, could potentially have been included in that, but eh, the amendments that we're proposing tonight would um, restrict that a little bit further than um, potentially what was allowed previously. Uh, so these two are grouped together, low barrier navigation centers and emergency shelters. Just because low barrier navigation centers are similar to emergency shelters, they provide temporary living facilities. Um, but they differ from emergency shelters in that they provide um, supportive service plans to people uh, to place them into permanent housing, there's also less turnover, um, and less barriers to entry like they allow pets and possessions in the facility. So this is um, uh, housing element amendment, or housing element program three, three also calls for um, low barrier navigation centers to be included in our code per state law. So these are proposed to be allowed by right uh, in areas owned for mixed use and and non-residential zones permitting multifamily uses, and this has been done in the amendments. Um, so they're proposed to be allowed by right in commercial zones because those are mixed use. And it also proposed in our, uh, to be allowed in our industrial zone because we, that's the zone that we allow the uh, emergency shelters in. So then emergency shelters, again, I'll just note the urgency ordinance will be made permanent, um, in housing element program three A, again, also um, has that assembly bill one thirty-nine that calls for revised standards, and so we've um, done that for emergency shelters. Uh, housing element program three B calls for zoning ordinance amendments um, for consistency with the California Employee Housing Act. So this act requires that employee housing for six or few persons um, must be treated the same as a single family dwelling and allowed by right in residential zones. So you could have six employees in a single family house and we would treat that just the same as a six-person family in a single family house. Um, and agricultural employee housing as well, this was um, also required for consistency with the Employee Housing Act. So this use um, was in our co- or is in our code currently, um, under farm employee housing and agricultural employee housing, I believe, um, we've decided to call specifically the use um, required by the Employee Housing Act, which is uh, housing for agricultural employees, that is up to thirty-six beds for group housing or twelve, twelve senior family or multifamily units, um, we're we're calling this agricultural employee housing complexes, just to differentiate. Um, so the state law here requires that these types of housing developments be allowed be allowed at the same remaining level as other agricultural activities in the same zone. So what we've done is proposed um, agricultural employee housing complexes via a conditional use permit in all zones besides single family and mobile home parks. And so this allowance as a CUP is consistent with um, what we allowed in the, uh, what we allow now under farm worker housing. Um, and then it's also consistent with the state legislation because um, a CUP is the, the permit level for other agricultural activities in those same zones. Okay, so um, for commissioners that might not have run into density bonus yet, I just wanted to um, explain density bonus a little bit. It's a state law um, that provides housing development that is providing um, a certain amount of affordable housing with potential adi- additional density. And also um, they can request uh, incentives, waivers of um, reduction of development standards and parking reductions in order to um, have that density that they're requesting be feasible. And so the city is required to comply with uh, state density bonus law. And so our housing element program three C calls for uh, consistency with state density bonus law, just referring to that state law. Um, so that our ordinance can stay, um, maintain consistency throughout changing legislation over time. So our current density bonus section is um, going to be completely replaced with this new section that will just refer to state law, so that we don't have to keep coming back um, as state law changes. Uh, so, okay, so reasonable accommodation. Um, this was in our code um, under a different title. It was um, the adaptive retrofit permit section. Um, and I will note, I put, uh, printed out some um, peppers on each of your um, dice. Yeah. So the first one is the adaptive retrofit uh, permit section. And this, um, I printed out for you because it was not included in the packet. And this was meant to be included as permanently stricken out. So we would um, remove this section entirely and replace it with a new section under reasonable accommodation, which is the current federal and state way to um, to refer to this idea. Um, and the idea is really applying flexibility in the zoning standards for persons with disabilities. So this could be, like, if somebody wanted to have um, a wheelchair ramp in the front setback, we might be able to reduce that front setback. Um, so that will be included um, later in terms of the recommendations to be made at City Council um, to also remove that adaptive retrofit permit section. Understanding it will be replaced with the um, the new section um, under reasonable accommodation. Okay, uh, large residential care homes and group homes. Um, and I'm happy to, to go back on the uh, that section that is printed out. Um, but just to move along here, uh, so large residential care homes and group homes, these are um, homes for seven or more people. Uh, the group care homes uh, would be for those with limits to their ability for self-care, but medical care isn't really um, an, a major element. And then group homes would uh, be specifically for those with disabilities. And so housing element program three G calls for consistency with these uses um, with the California Community Care Facilities Act. So that is proposed in the amendments here. And then um, lastly on the slide, non-managed homes and manufactured homes, um, their housing element programs call for amendments to ensure that these are treated the same as any single family residential home, uh, with the same development standards required by state law. Um, the last, I believe this is the last slide on zoning ordinance amendments. Um, these are other clarifications uh, made and then um, housing element programs related to the affordable housing ordinance, which were minor revisions um, to the affordable housing ordinance in terms of more cleanup items. Um, the other clarifications that were made um, were in the definition section. So we had uh, or have currently in our code um, a general definition section, which is nineteen point twelve point oh two oh. And then we had a definition section specifically for housing, uh, affordable housing definitions. So what we've done is um, consolidated those two sections into that one general definition section. And so um, this is another one where this section nineteen point sixteen point oh one two, the affordable housing definitions, those um, were also not in the packet. Those were meant to be all, uh, that whole section was to be stricken because they were, those definitions are all being consolidated into this um, general definition section. So that is also um, as a printout. Um, and I'll just note that while we were consolidating these two um, uh, sections, we removed any definitions regarding redevelopment agencies and areas because those are defunct and no longer applicable. And then um, moved any definitions related to density bonus into the density bonus section. Um, let's see here. So other minor clarifications um, were related to caretaker housing, adding a definition for that. Um, removing a large unit preference, which um, is inconsistent with the housing element. And then clarifying some mixed use regulations, um, so that all of these amendments are consistent with one another. Um, the last thing I will note here is um, there was a, a small unit preference for mixed use projects and that has also been included um, in the printouts, the last printout section or subsection nineteen point oh two, point two two oh, point C. So I think it's like the second um, sheet of that printout. And that's on the small unit preferences, that was meant to be removed, um, stricken, so printed that out as well. Um, and you'll see it's, the sub- subsection C is all crossed out. That is inconsistent with our mixed use regulations. And sadly, unfortunately missed in this um, the packet. So that will also be um, in the recommendation made at the end to remove that uh, small unit preference subsection. Okay, so specific plan amendment. Um, Resolution twenty-five dash oh five, this is the last uh, resolution. So these are uh, again, made um, because we need consistency with the zoning ordinance amendments. And then uh, also to make permanent that planning, planning director policy on ground floor residential uses and parking. Um, so I'll just go through quickly what that planning uh, director policy is and we'll see what reflected in the um, the amendments in the specific plan. But the specific plan contains a standard that uh, restricts residential uses and parking within the first a hundred and fifty feet or depth of a um, of a parcel on Avenue of Flags and Highway two forty-six within the specific plan. Uh, however, a lot of lots eh, in, in this area are not even a hundred and fifty feet deep or um, not sufficiently greater than that. And so it really restricted uh, development. And, and the intent was really to have viable commercial uses on the frontages and have the residential um, and parking uses behind those commercial uses on the frontage. So that is the planning director and Paul, uh, planning director interpretation of that. As long as the ground floor um, has residential uses and parking to the rear of the commercial uses on the frontage, then um, that meets the intent of the specific plan. So that's been made permanent in these or, um, in these amendments. Okay. Um, so in terms of environmental review, the general plan housing element amendment is exempt um, under that general rule exemption from SEQA that says that SEQA only applies to projects with potential or significant envi- environmental impacts. Um, because it's just updating background text, um, clarifying already allowed um, standards and allow the uses through that urgency ordinance, uh, this general rule applies here. For the uh, zoning ordinance amendments, these were covered by the initial study negative declaration that was done for the housing element amendment that analyzed all of the programs in the housing element. And so these zoning ordinance amendments covered by the housing element programs are covered by that um, negative declaration. Um, also the urgency ordinance on emergency shelters, that was found to be exempt as well. Um, and then for the Avenue of Flags specific plan, uh, the amendments in the specific plan are also covered by the Avenue of Flags specific plan. Uh, initial study mitigated neg- negative declaration that was done for the specific plan. Um, because the uses that are proposed uh, in the amendments or revised by the amendments are similar to what was already analyzed in that environmental document. Yeah, so there's three recommendations slides. The first um, is the general plan amendment that the Planning Commission considered the adoption of Resolution twenty-five dash oh three. A resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Bilton, California recommending to the City Council approval of amendments to the housing element of the general plan, twenty-five dash GPA dash oh one in regards to emergency shelters. The second action would be for the zoning ordinance amendment that the Planning Commission considered adoption of Resolution twenty-five dash oh four. A resolution of the Planning Commission um, to in, recommending to City Council adoption of an ordinance to implement programs one and three of the general plan housing element and make permanent urgency ordinance regarding emergency shelters. And then here are the um, following additions that we have. So the first would be, in addition to the adoption of the resolution, um, to, um, I should say, added on to that resolution would be to remove uh, section nineteen point oh eight point oh six oh, that adaptive retrofit permit. And the second would be to remove the nineteen, section nineteen dash uh, point oh, yeah. One six point oh one two, I've been talking for too long. Um, that's the definitions of the affordable housing section because those were all consolidated into the general definition section. Um, and then the last would be to remove that subsection on the small unit preference because that is inconsistent with our mixed use um, chapter. And lastly, a resolution um, for the Avenue of Flags specific plan amendment. Um, and I can read this out, a resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Bilton uh, recommending to the City Council approval of amendments to the Avenue of Flags specific plan uh, in regards to consistency with the general plan housing element and standards for ground floor residential uses. So I think with that, I'll turn it over to the commission. Thank you so much.
Wow, great job. That was a lot to understand, compile and convey. So, way to go. Um, I think everyone's probably gonna have questions. So we'll start with questions and then get into comments and then motion. Anyone wanna kick us off with questions?
Yeah, I can ask. Um, so, so the urgency ordinance, that was in response to state law, is that?
The twenty.
Twenty twenty-four.
Yeah, on emergency shelters.
Emergency shelters, yes.
Um, that was not in response to uh, state law necessarily. It was um, city, the city decided that we want to allow um, emergency shelters in industrial zones instead of our commercial core.
Because of not to interfere with businesses and that's, that's good. Okay, and then the industrial zone, that was the best, like, the next best thing, right?
Yeah, basically the state legislation, as Cara mentioned, um, requires that um, one zone be allowed by right. And so the cities do have the discretion to determine what that zone is. And um, through the emergency ordinance, uh, I'm sorry, the urgency ordinance for emergency shelters. Um, at the time, the council had adopted the urgency ordinance to um, place that allowed that use as a by right use allowed in the industrial zone as opposed to the commercial. So it was, it's a discretionary um, um, ordinance and, and an option available that is still consistent with state law as long as you are allowing it by right in one zone.
One zone.
Yeah.
This seems like a good idea, okay.
Do we actually have physical emergency shelters?
No, we don't.
I didn't think so.
Yeah, I just, I know we have an ordinance.
Uh, yes, as required by state law, every city has to have.
Yeah, I guess that's kind of clarifies my question as well. This is more of hypotheticals, if you're putting the ordinances in place, that actually.
Correct.
So that if they, yeah.
Yeah, so basically also, as Cara was saying, all cities are required by state law to identify zones in which they would allow them. So that in the future, if any uses, such as those came, um, we would have an identified zone by right that would be allowed.
Is there a map that shows this in where this could be?
Yeah.
Gotcha, okay.
That, that's a handy map.
Yes, okay. Yep.
All right. I had a lot of questions. I'm sorry, apologies in advance. Um, so do, is, in a similar vein, do we have any ag employee housing to date?
We don't.
Okay, that's, it makes sense. We don't have any ag, so, okay. Um, and then some of these are just clarifying my understanding. So the change in nineteen oh two one ten, that's the table that, that allowed uses and it, we changed, we added non-commercial to some of those ag things. And that's specifically so we don't have to allow ag employee dwellings as a use by right in those zones?
Correct.
And then, um, nineteen oh two one twenty, that's just the old density bonus section being cut.
Um, say that section one.
It's um, nineteen oh two one twenty. It's all lined out and it's in, what color was it? Blue, eh, special, or no, sorry, I'm wrong. This is, there's a lot of information in this packet, so. It's more just to understand what it was before. I'm pretty sure it was the old density bonus that maybe the city allowed, but you guys are cutting it to align with state law. It seemed like.
Yes, that is, that is, that's the correct, um, the intention, so, um.
Okay, um, and then I know we're cutting the ag employee dwellings. And like, I appreciate, I was laughing because like, it is so hard to decipher state law when it comes to farm worker housing. Ag employee dwellings, like, is a mess. Um, and I, I appreciate that it's being simplified here. Um, essentially, what would be an ag employee dwelling, like, up to six farm workers, like, housed by their employer, would still be able to fit under the employee housing that we're adding in.
The, yeah, any um, ag and agricultural workers could, that are six or fewer in a single family home could fit under that employee housing six or fewer. If it's seven or more, then it would bump that up to the agricultural employee housing complex.
Okay, as very, as you are aware, it is very complex.
It is. Good fun. Um, and then chapter nineteen eighteen, that's the one that it's referenced a couple of times, but it's not. Good fun. Um and then chapter nineteen eighteen, that's the one that it's referenced a couple of times, but it's not changing.
There's one small change. That's our um mixed use regulations and then one, um actually two small changes in that. Um to refer to agricultural employee or. Agricultural employees and that's um to provide consistency between. What we need to allow for agricultural employee housing and so if it's in one of those um. If it's in a section within a mixed use project, they would still have to allow that. Um and then there's one other clarification in terms of um. C S and M zones are the only, or live work. Units are the only residential types identified as allowed in the C S and M zones and that's clarified there. Um in that, in that chapter.
Thank you. Um, in the new definition section, which I'm understanding that we're moving over from this other section that you gave. I think that's what I, yeah, okay. Um, right, like, it has the. Tables that come from state law for rent calculations and sale prices. This might be a question for Ms. Gutierrez as well, but. Do we have to have that defined? And the reason I ask. Is because like, we all know, like area median income. Like we get these figures from section eight, like they're released every year, right? And they reference the area median income and then they also have the rows for the different categories of income level, right? So like almost every coastal county, including ours, the AMI. Is actually higher than a, like, or the low income level is higher than a percentage of the AMI. If that makes, so like the low income limits exceed the AMI eighty percent, right? And. I mean, we all know that's the case and it's not gonna change here and like, I, I understand that those. What's in those definitions comes directly from state law, but are we ever actually assessing? Like a, a rent limit or. You know, um what are the two things defined? The the affordable rent calculation and the affordable sales price calculation. Like the city is never. Conducting those calculations.
Yeah, we typically, we use the county's income and price guidelines, um which is based on this calculation, but not exact. In terms, yeah, a lot of times um the income limits go beyond that fifty percent for.
Right.
Uh AMI um and and also affordable housing uses um. TCAC limits, which is the California tax credit limits, which are also different from this definition, so.
Yes, so it's near point because they're, we're trying to pull numbers from, yeah, it's.
Like my, my preference would be to instead approach those definitions, like we approach the definite and. This is just a recommendation for the council to consider, obviously, but like how we define. Um low income level, for example, like to me, that differs directly to the state statute. And which then like goes on to say how section eight assigns these limits, right? Whereas like here we point to. Yeah, it's true, but it's not really like representative. I'd rather point out to the state law than put the table in and like. Have people not understand the nuances.
And um if I could make a recommendation, we are doing the comprehensive zoning ordinance amendment amendment. Overall, and so this could be um also included in the cleanup item.
Sure, sure. It, it's not like a, it, if it doesn't happen, it's fine because if there's nothing incorrect in here, I just think it's confusing. Yeah, um and not because you guys made it confusing because it's confusing beyond this room. Um, okay, I have one last question and it's about the Polo Village and the Bilton Garden Apartment. Um projects, which I understand like are both supportive housing projects. Were those permitted under A B two and six two?
No, they were not. Um we used our AHA's ordinance.
Okay, okay.
What was, what ordinance?
Um the affordable housing overlay zone.
So the city has not had an A B two and six two project?
Um, so I will just add that so Polo Village was actually approved via S B thirty five.
Okay.
Yeah, so as Polo Village was an S B thirty five, um and then Bilton Garden Apartments was an S B three thirty. Um but not the two one six two, um as far as I.
Okay, um the re, the only reason I bring that up. And I could save it for comments too. It's, it's related to the supportive housing section of the code. And it's not like, I think it's just a recommendation and we could talk about it, but. Uh maybe we should go to comments first and then I'll come back to that, that one. Okay, we'll do that. Yeah, let's go to comments and then I. The, most of my questions are done now. I only have three comments, so thank you guys. I appreciate patience. Okay, anybody have questions for staff beyond that or come, do we, we ready to give off comments?
No comments.
No comments.
Good job.
Yes, I agree. Yeah. Absolutely agree.
Okay. The supportive housing section of the code, right now, there's like this B two applicability. And it um, let's see, what zones do we put this in? We put. Supportive housing in some of the commercial zones as by right. Um and the R M zone is by right, but in the commercial zones, we said, has to be part of an. A proposer existing mixed use development. And I think that's fine because that's an objective standard that other residential uses in the zone are subject to. Where I think it gets. Murky is if someone proposed a project under A B two and six two. I don't think they could be required to develop any commercial component to their project. And that might just be a situation where state law overrides your code and that's fine. It's just something I.
No, that's great to point out and we'll definitely look at that as we move this forward and look at our other zoning code updates, et cetera. So, yeah, appreciate that.
And and then like realistically too, any project that's proposing supportive housing is gonna be eligible for state density bonus concessions. And they could get a concession to that standard anyway. So, I mean, it's more just like hypotheticals, but it's what, something that's uh stuck out to me. Um and maybe we wanna study before it goes to the council or just mention the council or.
Appreciate that, yeah, absolutely. Thank you. That's good later. Yeah.
Um, but there's a discussion item in here about the state density bonus application and like. Collecting a fee for having a separate, separate application process.
And and that wasn't included in the presentation, I mean, because it is a council item for policy.
Okay, am I able to comment on it?
Sure, it was in the packets.
I guess my thought is like. When you, you guys have experienced this, I'm sure, like when you're reviewing a project for completeness, like you don't necessarily know that there's an inconsistency where you're gonna need a. Concession or waiver until later, right? And then like o- often when people are using density bonus provisions. They're not even related to increased density, like their parking requirements or things like that. They can be really simple provisions, like just one line of the bill. And so I, if we wanted to collect a fee for it, so be it. That's, that's for council to decide, but I just. I think, I don't think it needs a separate. Process if it's included in a project description as a form of request. And then. Uh generally, I liked what you proposed for the manufactured home change. Uh for one, because obviously it reduces like construction costs, but also like what they're capable of doing with manufactured homes today is. Incredible, so. Thank you guys. It was, you guys did a great job with some really. Complex.
Yes, thank you Cara very much for the heavy list on, on a lot of this, so.
Totally, yes. Okay. So we have any um. Motion?
I'll make a motion to approve resolution two five oh three, two five oh four and two five oh five.
So um I was just gonna jump in here. Um we're gonna have to, uh we wanna take them each individually, so we'll start with the first one and then we can vote on that one. And then but move to the second one and vote on that one and then move to the third one. So we'll just take them individually, um just as a matter of procedure.
Okay, so I make a motion to recommend approval for uh resolution two five oh three.
I'll second.
All right, for resolution twenty five oh three, Commissioner Campbell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cup.
Aye.
Vice Chair Sarkia.
Aye.
And Chair Reese.
Aye.
Okay, resolution passes.
Make a motion to uh recommend for approval, resolution number two five oh four.
And I will say, um if you wanted to add the following additions listed in the PowerPoint to that resolution as well.
So inclusive of the uh. Additions presented.
I'll second.
Okay, for resolution twenty five oh four with the additions, Commissioner Campbell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cup.
Aye.
Commissioner Sarkia.
Aye.
And Chair Reese.
Aye.
Okay, resolution passes.
Uh motion to recommend for approval, resolution two five oh five with addition of the uh. Avenue of Plans, Plans, Flag Specific Plan Amendment.
I'll second.
All right, Commissioner, uh resolution twenty five oh five with the specific plan amendment, uh uh Commissioner Campbell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cup.
Aye.
Commissioner Sarkia.
Aye.
And Chair Reese.
Aye.
Resolution passes.
Nowhere to say.
Thank you so much.
It's all of you.
All right, good job. That was a productive meeting. Um, do we have any other business? Hey, any written communications? A planning commissioner comments to share? And then a planning director.
I'll make it short. I, I don't have much this evening um for the planning director report. I think we've, you know, had a lot of items here this evening, but um I just wanted to. Say and mention that I hope that the commissioners that did attend the Planning Commissioners Academy had a great time and hopefully it was informative for you, so. That's always a great, great event every year and it switches where it goes every year, so um encourage planning commissioners who would like to attend every year. Um to do so, so as long as budget permits, so you know, um we're, we're happy to, to send Jess.
Have they announced where twenty twenty six is?
I haven't looked, so I'm not sure. We'll have to look on the, on the web.
It was a good con- conference. Oh, I should mention too.
It does go north south.
I met with the um, the president of our conference uh. And uh he's from the city of Brea. And that, yeah, it opened my eyes up that uh, or. Kick my brain somewhere, that in Brea, they have a um, a theater group. For the, for the city. And I thought, man, that'd be a great next step. We got the museum, we're talking about the museum uh for kids, to have our own theater. You know, like Theater Fest, not like the one that we're gonna do with the Avenue of Flags. Where we could have actual productions and primarily, I'd like to see productions for children. You know, we have Theater Fest and, and, and whatnot for adult theater, but. Uh I remember when I lived down in that area in Brea. Um, the kids did Wizard of Oz. You could have a cast of like fifty kids. And they all had fun and they all got a chance to see what theater is all about and entertainment. And it would be really cool to um get to that point here and uh for culture in the city of Bilton.
We can alter him.
All right, yeah, that concludes my, my short report there.
Okay, great. I will uh adjourn us then at um seven fifty.